Brian, can you hear me? I'm not hearing any of this back from Christie.
Yep, I can hear you.
It looks like she stayed muted.
Hi Caroline, can you hear me now?
Yes, I can.
Okay, we have the online participants muted for a moment, so if you were trying to make a comment, please try again. Sorry about that.
We couldn't hear you.
Okay, thank you, Brian. For anybody who's online, we would welcome any public comments at this time. If you've never done that before, just unmute yourself and share a couple of minutes with council. Can you hear us better now, Brian?
Yes, we can hear you now.
I'm not hearing any public comments. Do we have changes or additions to the agenda by council or staff? As for presentation, I just learned this week Representative Finstad sends out a weekly newsletter and he announced something that I knew was gonna happen, but I guess I didn't realize it was gonna happen so quickly. He introduced bill language to the House to actually name the national, the bald eagle is the national bird. This is something that Preston Cook initiated. He's been researching this for years and years and the National Eagle Center felt it would be an excellent advocacy on behalf of the national eagle to actually sanctify the national bird. Many people think that it is, and it wasn't, so. I learned that in his newsletter and then Preston Cook actually followed up. The Senate actually got their bill approved, but I believe it was Senator Threllyn Finstad who originated the legislation, so I'll just read it quick. This is Senate File forty-six-ten, and then there'll be a companion House File eighty-eight-hundred. Congress finds the bald eagles are historical symbol of the United States representing independence, strength, and freedom. The bald eagle is unique to North America. On June twentieth seventeen eighty-two, the bald eagle was adopted as the code of arms for the United States Great Seal. The bald eagle image remains the leading insignia for all branches of the United States military. The bald eagle is the leading image on thousands of federal government branches, department head agencies, including President, Vice President, Congress, and Senate. The bald eagle serves as the logo, trademark, and brand icon for businesses, nonprofit organizations, and sports teams across the United States. Bald eagles are integral to the spiritual lives and sacred belief systems of most indigenous peoples and tribal communities. Bald eagles are prevalent in belief, practice, stories, ceremonies, dance, traditions, songs, regalia, flags, insignias, arts, craft, and other forms of spiritual reverence. Bald eagle festivals are held in over one hundred locations across the United States, and key components of community engagement, the bald eagle is prevalent on hundreds of United States stamps, many United States coins and currencies. The bald eagle is a primary symbol and symbol on federal and state flags throughout the United States, and joint efforts of the federal government, state, and local governments, nonprofit organizations, and individuals have contributed to the successful recovery of the bald eagle. Therefore, Chapter thirty-three of Title thirty-six United States Code is amended by adding at the end following the national bird, the bald eagle is the national bird of the United States. So that's very exciting. That came from our community, that was taken to our US government by our representative, and it's just great to see that. And it was also neat to see that on the House file, the co-signing authors included all of the representatives to Minnesota, Representative Angie Craig, Tom Hammer, Betty McCollum, Pete Stauber, Michelle Fishbach, Donna Omar, Dean Phillips, and also from Washington, Dan Newhouse, from Wisconsin, Derek Van Oden, from Virginia, Donald Byer, Stephanie Weiss from Oklahoma, and Andy Barker from Kentucky. So I know there was a, Preston had a friend, he's an author who visited here a couple of years ago, was also an expert in eagles and has written several books, and I think he's a Kentucky resident, so I think it was our Minnesota-Kentucky legislators that brought it forward, so it's been nice. And with that, I was very saddened as the Doc Park opening, but I heard it was a big success, so thanks Tyler for everybody, and everybody for all the leadership on that. I know it's been long awaited and people are really happy about that. I don't have any other comments, but we'll take committee reports or any other announcements from council?
Nothing, no, at utilities.
Port Matt. We reviewed a few items. We had a presentation from the coast with Army Corps, but this time in respect to the stabilization of the pit that's subbed by our wellhead in the cafe up there. That twenty acres closest to the cafe is done, it's finished, and so we're looking to have some sort of something cap over some grass and then. It's more difficult when people realize to get something to grow on those kinds of dredge material like that. So they are working on it, that's, it's ongoing. There's actually an individual that's been in charge, that's been put in charge at the Army Corps to look at that. We had an update with respect to the environmental impact study that we're doing on the Barge Terminal. It's done in respect to us responding to state and other government agencies. And we're just, we're, so the Port Authority will approve it our next meeting in August, and it goes for submission to the feds, and then there'll be a public review period as well before it gets finalized. With respect to the Barge Terminal and our agreement with the Army Corps for management dredging materials, we agreed on our ticket fees for next year. They're up a little bit, this costs a new business. And I think that's about it. Oh, the, the city sign up there on sixty and sixty-one, sorry, it came here as opposed to the Port Authority. I think that's about it.
Thanks for that. Parks, anything from your side, Brian?
Streets Matt, we talked about changing some of the signage for the new roof shelf location. And then we gave an update on the downtown street project. They will be back by the end of August or on Bridge Avenue, and as of right now, they're still on schedule. Parks, we talked about a future grant for Pollinator Garden and also some more trees, and then we had a resignation of Nicole Grader, so we have an open spot for the park doors.
Sounds good. Thank you. And with that.
We did meet in July, but our August meeting is on the fourteenth, which is a change.
Ryan, anything you wanna update us on the side of agenda items?
In July, we had seven five calls, which is down a little bit over two we had last year in July. Our transfers for July were kind of abysmal. We turned down fifty-five percent of our transfers when we took forward. So we're planning to increase that. Overall, we're up a hundred and forty-five calls over this time last year. We're sitting at five twenty-two for the year. Our revenue through the end of June is on pace to go over four hundred thousand, so above what we projected. And our ALS and DLS building is close to that and is pretty close to each other. Other than that, our two people started, so hopefully we'll get them going and get some help with that. Regions are still a little bit of a challenge. But that should be kind of oriented nationally right now, and so depending on the most of them, because we have one track out of town, but.
Thank you, I saw it. Thanks, Ryan. All right, and what was Caroline's report?
Okay, Doc Park was mentioned. We have a nice article out there. Tyler and I have been busy looking at financial projections and our budget for next year. It's our biggest favorite time of year. Wendy attended a webinar on new policies around paid parental leave and paid FLMLE as a result of some changes at the state. We were a little surprised this would include pool employees and ambulance and fire volunteers, and it would have a budget impact in twenty twenty-six, so we would have time to plan for that. And I'm glad Wendy is kind of learning about that, and that's gonna affect, I think, all businesses. We also met with the League of Minnesota to look at our insurance claims and just strategize around best practices for safety and prevention of claims on injuries or workman's comp, so that was useful for all of us. We are submitting a ten thousand dollar grant for hopefully a future Eagles Basin playground, and I've identified another grant, and thank you Emily for also giving us a recommendation there. I just wanted to give a heads up, we've been really trying to get the Main Street East parcel across from the condos into production, and we had a survey done. And if we want to be able to combine the right-of-way that's across the street, we're gonna need to coordinate with the condos across the street. So we're gonna take that back to Port and the Housing Task Force and see if they want a direct staff to keep working on that. I submitted a hundred sixty-four thousand dollar grant towards demoing the former transfer building and parking lot. This would offset some of our TIF that we had planned. And we're still waiting until mid-August for results on the housing grant, so we do not know if that project's moving forward yet. And on this agenda, we have to correct an error on the resolution. For the Barge Terminal, one of the requirements for four million dollar grants, or two point seven million dollar grant, I'm increasing it, two point seven million dollar grant, is that we have a complaint process if somebody feels that they were discriminated against, or they ADA compliant, so that's not on our website. We had to follow a checklist, and that checklist was approved, so we've kind of cleared a hurdle for funding for the two point seven million for the Barge Terminal project. So Lisa and I did that one together, and I'm glad we have it, and we have a new policy, which is if you need second language help, we will have an as-needed basis. So I can do Spanish, and if anyone else has another language, we had to come up with a policy just how we were gonna translate if that was needed. So it was kind of an interesting exercise, and we have this part of our website now. That's it. Okay. So we were able to kind of demonstrate, we don't have a huge non-English speaking population, so we're only gonna make materials available on an as-needed or requested basis, which made sense, and they accepted that, so.
I think, if I might interrupt, the letter did also state that you guys didn't, and you were one of the ones that had like a positive case scenario.
Not least case scenario.
And they thanked you, so. Letter gave the best.
All right, great. And under consent agenda, we have a number of items. We have deception, center volunteer incentive pay increases, our regular council minutes from July second, the MS legislative support that was urged by our Southwest Minnesota League of Municipalities, the server, server pro work, which is disinfecting of the playgrounds and buildings that were. Damage during flood time, wave fighting signage for the light posts downtown in the downtown district, the August warrants, the transient merchant peddler permit, twenty twenty-four crack field project, portable radio purchase approval of contract with Gunner's and San Elizabeth, which is becoming amplified to provide paramedic EMT services in the ER. An athletic complex pay application, which is number eight, and the twenty twenty-three street project payout number ten. Do we have a motion to approve consent agenda? So move, I'm sorry, I'm looking at Tim's second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Oppose, same sign. All right, and we do now have a public hearing. Again, we welcome the public. We'll open that public hearing. We'll open the public hearing at six fourteen, and do we have any, do you wanna describe this any further? This is regarding our assessment hearing, so pursuant to our resolution that we adopted on July second, we have the final assessment role for our twenty twenty-four street improvement project, which is prepared, and that's gonna be pulled up here. And individual notices we've sent to affected property owners informing them of the assessment hearing, which is scheduled for tonight, and the notices inform property owners of the amount they'd be assessed on their property, along with information on the interest rate and the terms of the assessment and how to prepay them. So public notice of the assessment hearing was also sent to the County, Waukesha County Herald. That was not published, so since individual property owners' notices did go out, we recommend the council open and hold the assessment hearing now, and hear any comments, but then we would continue the hearing to September third, so that proper public notice occurs. And also, so we can, can we take comment now?
Yeah.
Okay, so anyone who'd like to make comment about that can certainly do that tonight, and then know that council will reopen this again in our regular September meeting, just because of that public notice requirement. Do we have anyone who'd like to make a public comment during the hearing? Do we have any public comment regarding the street improvement hearing? And I'll call one more time to see if there's any public comments related to like twenty twenty-four street improvement hearing. Otherwise, hearing now will close the hearing. All right, we'll close the hearing at six sixteen. And if you know anybody who's interested in making public comment, we'll discuss, reopen this hearing again on the September third regular city council meeting. All right, and then under general business, we have an improvement resolution regarding the bids, and I think we have Brian online to help us talk about this. Brian, do you wanna describe what we have before us and the timing?
Sure, I can certainly do that. So there was a recommendation letter in your packet. We did take bids on the twenty twenty-four street improvement project on July second. As expected, we only received one bid, given the, just the nature of the asphalt contractors in the area. The engineers estimate for the project, we had two bid schedules for the project, and the difference between the two bid schedules was Schedule A did not include a one, one section block of Franklin Street between, or Franklin Avenue, excuse me, between Third Street and Second Street East. So Schedule A did not include that block. Schedule B did include that block. The only reason we bid it that way is just in case the Schedule B came in higher than what the engineers estimate. We wanted to give the council an option to reduce the project's scope to still come in within budget. The good news is that the bid from Rochester Sand and Gravel for Schedule B was two hundred and sixty-seven thousand five hundred and fifty-three dollars, which was less than the engineers' estimate, and would still allow the project to fit within the budgeted amount for the project. So based on that low bid received from Rochester Sand and Gravel, we did include the bid abstract as an attachment to the letter. Our recommendation would be to award a construction contract to Rochester Sand and Gravel for bid Schedule B. That would allow them, taking this action tonight would allow them to get the project on their schedule and pave it along with the same schedule as the downtown project to have some efficiencies there and get it done before the weather turns in October. So that's our recommendation. I'd be happy to answer. Any questions?
Any questions for Brian? Do we have a motion to make a spin-off as stated for the full scope of the project? That was, of course, then a moment from Tim, second from John. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Oppose, same sign. Thanks, Brian.
Thank you.
All right, let me get the second read of the adoption of the zoning, excuse me, second read on the property rezon for fifteen oh one and sixteen hundred fifth Grand Boulevard, and we have Christie with us. Anything further, Christie? This is our second read.
I have nothing unless there are questions of the group for me.
Any questions for Christie? All right, do we have a motion to approve the zoning change? We had a, I heard Brian first. Did I hear a second?
Yes.
Second from Jeff. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Oppose, same sign. All right, now the second, excuse me. Second read of our adoption of zoning use chart changes, and we have Christie on this item as well, if there are any questions for Christie, go ahead and ask those of her. And with the admission of motion to approve the amended changes to the section.
Almost, yeah.
Thanks, Brian. Second by Jeff. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Looks like a long agenda, but second reads are pretty efficient. Now we have an approval of an RFP for a building feasibility study. Do you want to talk about this at all? Ryan or anybody else? It was pretty straightforward. We, this item was on our last agenda. We asked for a task force to get together and put out a heartbeat of bullet analysis, and we have.
So we had five of those for the years ago, so when we met and discussed them, we felt that Brunton Architects was the best study forward. Caroline talked to them and discussed some other changes with them, so the price went down just a little bit, and then we did the taxpayer financial grant for five thousand dollars towards that study. So if there's any questions with them.
That's good. For the public, this is an analysis that looks at our existing facilities, so our ambulance, fire, fire department, city hall, and police, looking at space needs for each department, and evaluating existing ambulance, the site, as well as tuning vacations for potential future building if that were recommended. It would have a cost estimate for renovating and making an addition to the existing ambulance building, as well as building a new standalone ambulance garage or joint building. Do we have a motion to accept the, or give the award for the RFP to Brunton Architects? Do the second.
All second.
With a motion by John, a second by Tim. Any further discussion?
I'll discuss for a sec. So our plan for this standalone building was ten to twenty years, I think, is what we decided on.
Did we even, did we?
Like when we even, we went to that exercise, I thought. So I don't know, I just feel like by the time we get around the building and making these improvements, our needs are gonna change, and maybe the things that come out of this study are gonna change. So it's just.
I think they tie it up count for expected change with some degree of reason. I don't know. I don't know. They discussed that with you guys here.
Yeah, I have, when I went through the initial planning tour and I came up with some of those numbers. On cost, I took into account planning well into the future for what we might need, based on what I put in with our space needs, to come up with that number, I was like, that's what we need more than that in coming years. It's pretty far. It was a future. And when I did background checks, we had some showings, when I talked to the city of Jackson, the director had just started, but he said that they're happy with the building, but he said that the building, the building too small. And so at ten years after they built it, there are no specs. So he said that was the one thing that they wish that they would have done is built it bigger because they ran out of space within ten years. But other than that, the other people that I talked to were all happy with the process and who they dealt with. It was pretty consistent who they dealt with, that they had, you know, for turnaround times, on any questions or changes, so. I felt pretty confident.
Any other questions or comments?
I think this is a good idea to have this study, but something to have in your back pocket, just like when we did a housing study, I mean, if we ever have to go to our legislators for help in funding and stuff, or looking for grants, this tells us where we're at now and where we wanna go, at least. I think it's, I think it's good for setting a view to the future.
Digest the choices we have before us.
We have a motion.
Yeah. I interviewed these guys too, who sent them the presentation, and they were good. They thought their stuff was good.
And then I think my plan is, once we have it, we would have a workshop, but when we tried to workshop it before and discuss it, we didn't have the information we needed at hand to have a discussion, so I think that's. Where we've sort of landed on the study. But, and I think Brian was also asking, we did get a study from an organization that was looking at, you know, getting business, so that was pretty high level. It just told us we had a lot of needs, but it wasn't specific to where we might go on how we might do it.
Sounds good. We have a motion, a second. Further comments, as well as a call for hope. All those in favor say aye. Thanks for the work on this. Thanks for the task force.
We're already setting up some news with them that wanted to try to set up, start setting up meetings before, and then have them wait, but they were, all of the bids anticipated to be done by before the December council meeting, so hopefully we can track that. It'll be done by then.
This one, I may have created this, sorry. What stirred this up for me is that the Southern Minnesota Initiative Foundation annually puts forth a small towns grant, and in the past, I feel like they've even alluded to community signage as a way to make communities become more welcoming and inclusive, and so I brought this up just because Kel and I are always kind of rattling off the grants that we see coming through, and should we be, you know, is it worth taking time to do some of these smaller grants, so I kind of wanted to vet that with her, and then I understand it went to the Port Authority for discussion. I didn't hear that discussion. But I have kind of strong feelings that it's not the kind of thing we want council to design or really decide on. I think it should go to some kind of committee that includes citizens. But anyway, we got, it's like we got a kind of an idea from, was that from Chad Tracy? Yeah, and obviously they didn't design that for us, it's just, you know, it's sort of a stock design. I've been looking at community signage since I moved to Waukesha, because early in my time on the Heritage Preservation Commission, we looked at trying to get grants to change that sign, just because it sort of has lived its lifespan. One of the other reasons that's an important thing to think about, I think, is because as we look at highway realignment, I think you probably all remember the rendering showed community welcome signage at both ends of that parcel. So it isn't just simply thinking about one sign on the highway, but more thinking about a system of welcome signs throughout the community. When we did the signage for downtown, the ones that are in our packet tonight, we just conceived of them as simple and kind of making sense with the existing signage, the black. Making sense with the existing signage with black, uh, Wauwashaw signs that are in Poplar Park and Heritage Park. As well as considering what would a future welcome sign look like for the community and just wanting it to be as neutral as possible so that that is still open. Um, you know, I think we need to think about like identity systems, are we gonna, is it gonna have a logo on it, what is that logo gonna be, is it, um, you know, is it, is it. Welcome to the city of Wauwashaw, or is it more of a community welcome? Um, but I, I think there are lots of citizens that could provide good feedback and, and kind of come up with concepts. And as I described to Caroline, we maybe get a grant to help us with the actual. Design process or even part of the construction of the signage that ultimately, I think, you know, there'll be city expense, so the council. Should weigh in on, you know, kind of what this process looks like, but I didn't really mean for it to come to council, it was just sort of like spitballing.
Yeah, I just. Spent a lot of staff time without kind of feeling the temperature. Because even if we, you know, start directing or port authority directed Dusty, hey, go ahead and explore that. But then it comes to council and they've never heard of it and it's dead on arrival, then that's a lot of wasted. Wasted time, so this is my agenda and it's maybe confusing, but I just, I've watched. Staff spend time on things and then be dead on arrival, so I just, I think that it's sort of, um. And just knowing that there would be some sort of commitment from the city, I think Dusty was exploring, could you. Get sponsorship for it, but you wouldn't necessarily want a bunch of logos on it either, um, so.
Yeah, so any, if anybody wants to, I, I know I've seen grants for kind of community-led design initiatives, and that's really, that can really. Build a lot of goodwill and can be really engaging and, and citizens have good ideas and I'd love to see that kind of a process and if we can find funds for that, that's what I. Love to see happen, but I don't know if anybody else has been involved enough.
Yeah, you know, the, I mean, it came to the port authority and I, I thought we decided that it was probably more. At this level than at the port authority level.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, um, and it, I think it makes sense to look into it, um, one thing that I was not aware of was. The cost of these. No idea, um, so there's that, and that kind of stymied us a bit. Thought, well, we maybe really need to have maybe a committee, you know, a citizen committee, whatever, group, and decide if it's something we want. And how we move forward in the future with that, probably the sign, and I guess in my opinion, it needs some updating, it's been. Now for.
And Wauwashaw did some work on this as well as a part of our streetscape, because they knew that this community signage piece was, you know, we were opening that chapter of. With regards to downtown, so there are a couple even more expensive options in our streetscape plan, which, you know, I don't see the price tag on the. Fanciest one that they designed this anywhere reasonable for our community, and I've seen little tiny communities that have big sign and I don't know what it gains them. Um, but I think a well, a thoughtful, you know, really welcoming uh sign that really represents the community well visually is valuable.
So I guess we were looking, port authority was looking for maybe, you know, again, if there was interest in. Did they want, do we want to start a committee on this or not?
My temperature on this is absolutely ice cold. There's nothing wrong with the sign we have now. You know, but what you put in the agenda packet doesn't tell you, and I know that's just uh someone screwed up, it doesn't tell you anything different than what's on the sign now. And I don't believe for one second that the sign of a city makes people wanna move to that city or anything, this is a total waste of taxpayer dollars. Well, no, but seventy thousand dollars, that's what it costs Plainview for their sign, all their taxpayer dollars, and I don't see that. I'm absolutely ice cold on this.
Do you remember how the other sign was developed, I mean, I, it's, the other piece of it is. Oftentimes chambers and other entities within the community are engaged in this kind of thing, and, you know, I think we have partners out there.
Yeah, I think, I think the chamber is enthusiastic, but probably not willing to take the lead on it, so.
Remember we had another sign that I don't, I can't remember what it looks like right now.
I mean, if someone wants to donate a hundred thousand dollars, fine, but not tax dollars.
Yeah, I, I, I'm fine with looking into it, I think no decisions can be made until we reroute the road, even, you know, where do you put it?
The planning that's valuable, that's what I meant when I said I, with this.
I, I think it's, as long as you wanna plan, it doesn't cost any money, I plan away, but uh, I think it'd be a bigger discussion of actually doing it.
Yeah, I, what I'd like to see is a community that cares about this. Get some resources to back of, of an initiative, a planning initiative, so that something can be presented. And if there's a cost component that the city is responsible for, then we respond to that versus thinking that we're gonna do it or not do it. That's what I'd love to see, and um, I think we should try to see if there's grant sources out there. Typically, there's, you know, for, I don't, I, I believe in community-led design, but I don't believe in citizens trying to design something by committee. I think that if there's somebody that can facilitate that and help with the design process, that's gonna get us a lot further. And yes, you can contact any sign company, they'll give you a couple options, but I, that's not really what I mean, that, I feel the same way that that example is like, okay, whatever, it could be any city. Is port, would port.
And I'll, I'll certainly bring it back to port and then report. Sure, where, where they go with this.
Sounds good, I can see a lot of the resources, I, I know I've seen resources for.
Yeah, this.
Process of getting something designed and then you decide if you wanna go there or not.
I think that's a good point is, where does it go?
Yeah.
Right, all those things, so.
Alright, um, next. On our calendar will be our budget workshop date. So we're looking at August twenty-first, which is a Wednesday, the three P M of the library. Next check that, I mean, hey, calendar, I think that should be fine.
I did not have heard Brian, um.
I have a nod of late, but if it's good for everyone else, I'll adjust.
So that's. Is that work for everybody else?
August.
Wednesday, three P M.
So one of the things that I wanted to get feedback on is, um. How much do you wanna focus on the budget this year versus what the accomplishments of the year were in form out of the budget workshop? Because in the prior years, I was learning about the city. And I put a lot of effort into kind of sharing and sharing photographs and what was done. Um, and so Tyler gave me some feedback that he thought perhaps that presentation could wait till December. And just present it once versus two times, um, but I also know that a lot happened this year. So in that initial budget workshop, we could kind of get a major accomplishment from each department versus recording on the calls for service. And, um, so, but I think when I looked at other communities' presentations, it's more just. What's the budget doing, it stays focused on that, so we could save all of it for, for December. Too, I think it's still valuable to kind of do a state-of-the-city type presentation in the context of the budget, but, yeah.
I'm with you, I would much more rather focus on just the budget, December highlight, I mean, I think the highlights are for, believe me, you're on.
You guys are doing a really great job keeping us all informed every month, basically, on what's, what the highlights are, the number there, we should just concentrate on budget.
And we're all seasoned, you know, jeans, nah, doing this, so.
I think for when people come to the public hearing, it was informative if you, you came, so I won't. Get rid of all of it, but I can do less too, because.
It's an excellent presentation, and I love that it lives on, so we don't need it to start budget.
Okay, so we'll focus on the budget this year and, um.
Sounds good.
That will save the big presentation for later, so, okay. Um, and then is there any kinds of ways you wanted the budget analyzed that it hasn't been analyzed historically? Um, I think people have found useful the taxing rates for other areas and the trending. And, and the graphs and stuff, um, but.
No, I think what you presented before has worked well, as long as we get it before the meeting, I think that's probably more beneficial, just so we can. Digest it before we have a meeting.
Yeah, even bits and pieces, you know, however you can get out, be greater.
So send it more advanced of the workshop, okay.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't need to be weeks, I mean, it's hard, I care, but uh, at least it gives us a heads up of what is coming and then we can highlight what we have.
We will try to kind of use noticing requirements, so I will try to get it to you by, you know, Monday or Friday before. That sounds good, okay, thank you, six sixteen or six nineteen, okay.
So here we are at this, um, unamended resolution that we missed a little bit of language, so in our, um. Commitment for local match for the housing grant application, we need to add the following statement. Be it further resolved that if the project identified an application, they'll substantially provide the public benefits listed in the application within five years from the date of the grant award. Wauwashaw may be required to repay one hundred percent of the award grant from Minnesota statute. Good for that, you have a motion to amend. We, we have a motion from Tim and then, sounds like Jeff got the second, uh, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Do you wanna take a donation?
That sounds good, yeah, Brian can do the nation.
Just put the other page, so, very.
The donations page is always slow for me.
Tim, get it there. Okay, uh, donations for this time. Um, for the community pool, sixteen thousand dollars from the Wauwashaw Kellogg Area Community Foundation. Uh, two hundred dollars from an anonymous donor, fireworks, friend Diane Schover, two hundred dollars. Bank of Alma, fifty dollars, Pure Identity, three hundred dollars, Robin Waltney Group, uh, one hundred dollars. Norman Kathy Bushan was thirty dollars, uh, Greenfield Township, two hundred and fifty dollars, and Quick Trip, two hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, donations to the library in memory of Beth Hager by Russ Hager, fifty dollars. In memory of Carol Raymond by Marianne Carr, one hundred dollars. Uh, Gary Todd from the Pioneer Club donated fifty dollars, and the Roary Club for the Summer Reading Program donated a thousand dollars. Donation to the ambulance, a hundred thirty dollars by Mike Madison, um, sobriety ride, that looks like his. Organization, um, the athletic complex donations, Robin and Scott Waltney, five thousand dollars. Chad and Allison Springer, three thousand dollars, W and V Financial, twenty-five thousand dollars, and Boltman Bank, five thousand dollars. And to the fire department, uh, Kennedy Tent Rental donated the tables and chairs for the chicken feed for Riverboat Days, that was a four hundred and fifty dollar value. So thank you, everybody, for those donations.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye. Alright, now we'll go back to our closed session, so I'll, um, get us started here, so, um. Right.
You need to shut that off then.
And she, everyone has to listen to the motion, yeah.
Okay, so, here's how it goes, so the agenda I think for this meeting is a labor negotiation strategy under Minnesota statute, section thirteen D point oh three subdivision one clause B. A portion of the meeting will be closed pursuant to such statute only upon duly approved motion of the city council, so I now entertain a motion to close this portion of the meeting.
So.
Second.
I think I heard Brian and Jean, first from Brian, second from Jean, all those in favor say aye. Alright, well, we in closed session, so this time, uh, city council will go to a closed session in the chambers. And only city council members, city representatives may be in attendance at any portion of a closed session. We're gonna do it in the first, right?
Yeah.
Are we standing?
Yeah, I, are, or, what is, I've never done this before.
As long as we don't microphone, that owl staring at me like.